To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for justice, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you have anything in community form? I had neither. Any conflict of interest declarations? We do have a few additions to the agenda. Under nine point five, we have two resignations. Nine point six, we added Jeff and Sharon Mustawal for the summer. Nine point eleven, update COVID guidelines. Nine point twelve, handicap bus. Any other additions to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as with those alterations?
I'm welcome.
Okay, Brooke, can I get a second?
Second.
Ashley. Ashley, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda has been adopted. All right, communication and discussion items. Amy, anything from you?
Um, not really. Just a reminder that tomorrow's the school board election. So I have a full spot at Wolsey for the Wolsey patrons, spot for the old Wesley patrons as a community or legion in. If we're already, we don't have one college six days, so my dad replacement, so.
Okay. How about you, Dave, for plant maintenance?
Uh, let's see, highlights. Boiler was repaired, so were all boilers. We certified again till 2026, so that was good. We didn't, we dodged a blowout now and were able to find parts. Uh, we got a DHS grant to pay for about half of what we were looking to do in security upgrades for cameras, so we, eleven thousand dollars every reward for that. Otherwise, a couple of little things we're doing there. We went up and looked at the old gym. Sound system in the new gym, we're looking to upgrade. And touch base in the roof replacements in elementary, I know we approved, put that to bids, however, it wasn't exactly what we wanted for a roof system. We wanted to match what we have currently on the new roofs, which is a fully adhered roof and what they quoted was a ballast in roof. So we worked with the company to do sole sourcing, so we didn't have to go two bid. We could do a cooperative purchase. However, they came in about $200,000 above what the first bid we got was, so we're going back to, I'm going back to the original company to request a estimate on a fully adhered roof from them to see what they are for a price estimate. I can't believe that switching from a ballast roof to a fully adhered roof is $200,000. So he's coming tomorrow to look at the original bidder or original estimate, he's coming tomorrow to take a look at it. So I'll have more for you probably next week.
Okay.
On the elementary roof. That's it.
Any more questions for Dave? I see we have busing on there, or I guess we have that.
Yeah, I think that's on, I think as far as the ADA bus goes, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave? No. Nancy?
Okay. We have smarter balance testing, this just began. Juniors completed theirs last week and then third grader completing theirs this week. Seniors have been busy for grade four graduation. We plan on having everything ready to go and printed out and everything by May 1st, hopefully. March 21st, Mr. Kevin's won the winner's sports award. Ms. Stevens did a great job with our junior high and high school national honor society induction ceremony on March 26th. We had kindergarten screening on March 27th. As of this time, we're looking at about seventeen for kindergarten for next year. We had a group high school students participate in the quidds school held at Northern State University in March. Next year, Ms. Hook's plans on entering them in the science fair there as well. Ms. Stevens will be taking the juniors and seniors to a job fair in here on the 17th and the 18th. We have our WWS showcase here. It'll be a great time for communities and families to come together and celebrate a great school. We will have interactive activities for the kids to come when they get here and then there will be a meal served with the freshman, from the freshman class. HOSA is going to their state conference this month. That'll be held in Sioux Falls. FFA will be heading to Oklahoma to compete at Nationals in range judging, April 28th through May 3rd. Track and field started in March. Their first track meet was canceled due to weather. There's about seventy kids out on track, seven through 12, and this will be the first year that we're going to compete in the javelin throw. The first meet is tomorrow. Prom is set for April 27th. Grand March starts at 7:30 PM. The butterfly balls will be held the following afternoon, that Sunday. It's a fundraiser for the preschool. Ms. Surface has been getting ready for spring concerts. Those will be held the last week in April slash first week in May. We'll be going to the JBC spelling bee on April 30th. Mrs. Draft takes our elementary students. And then, just so you're aware, we have started the paperwork for our two staff members who will be teaching those electives we talked about last month. We have put them into the state and then depending how fast they get back to us, then we'll do the second part of that, so. And they're actually in the schedules with their elective, so the students will be able to pick from those once they set up a classes. That's it.
Questions, Amy? Any other questions for Nancy? Thank you very much. It's Central?
No, I don't have a question.
Yeah. Or?
Media's next.
Okay. Any reports? I'll see.
I should probably take that off because really we didn't have.
Okay. Okay. Transportation, Jeff, did you guys meet on bus or anything with Russ or?
Well, it's been meeting or doing.
Okay. Anything we should address right now or? Take it a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tara, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Action items, new and unfinished business, esports. We remember to put it on this time. I had heard that we, Santel, had a potential grant.
Yep, three thousand dollars and that would cover the one thousand that it would cost for the school and it's, if I remember right, it's a hundred per, fifty per student.
Okay, up to a certain amount?
No, there's, there was no limit. But there's different games that could be played, so.
Okay.
They said there was no limit.
Okay. That sounds good to me, I guess. Let's go, we'll have to open that up. Coaching position, and I assume that, would that be coaching or an advisor?
They call it general manager and so you don't, they made it sound like it's pretty much just a contact person between them, like setting up games and whatnot. So I don't, I don't know how much coaching you can do because most of it is done from home. I mean, I'm assuming there's some amount you could do, but most of the games are played from home, so the students would play at home unless we set up a, a room here for them to do it.
So we won't need a coach?
Well, they, they called it a general manager. So you'll need somebody that is in constant contact with FedWorks. So I'm, I'm, I'm assuming they're putting that together like coaching slash general manager.
And scheduling and all that.
Yeah, okay. Because they do all the scheduling.
Gotcha.
But you still have to set up like your teams, like you have to have a varsity team.
Yeah.
And then you can have, they, they made it sound like you'd have as many JV teams as you are.
Does this have like a season or is this all?
Yep. It's, it's, it kind of falls in line with basketball season, it's a little bit shorter, but they have their state tournament in March. They just had it in March in, at, in Brookings, so.
And they're still on track to having an A and a B.
Yeah, that's what they said, yeah.
I guess I would like to know what the expectation is of that point of contact before we try to assign a compensation. You know, the way we normally do with head coaches or HOSA or any of you.
We've already been through negotiations.
Okay. I digress.
But being a first year, there's going to be a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, that could be something to definitely look at once we go forward, but. I think there's, and you've heard from quite a few students that they would.
Yeah, when, because Tom sent out a, like a poll earlier and they, there was quite a few interested. I know. I don't remember the exact word, but it was, it was enough.
Okay. I don't know, I'd love, I'd think of anything we could do to better our school, this is one thing, especially when we get grants to help us get off the ground. So that's just my opinion, this is my personal. So I guess I'd, I'd be entertaining a motion to approve our esports program. All in favor?
Aye.
Was it Jim and Jenny?
Yeah. Opposed? We have an esports program. The Sentinel, nine point two, I met with our insurance rep. It's his opinion that we table any and all discussion on that until the state comes up with a policy regarding the program or the enhanced carry at this time because insurance companies, our insurance company threatens to drop you if we, if we put that in policy. He stressed several times to table this until the state has come up with a firm policy regarding it, so. I guess that's my recommendation at this time and he's gonna, he thought either the May or the June meeting, Dustin Matthew would be bringing some information from either our insurance company or another insurance company as well as policies that are, that are, so just to update you all, it is ongoing, but for right now, it's, it's. Second reading of the J case, discipline, restraint and seclusion.
Or after the bills. And the financials. I'd put those, I'll see if I can.
One more? Okay. And what changes can we make?
So the restraint of this seclusion, we just reviewed it.
Okay.
No changes were made.
Okay.
Student discipline, we added underclass sixth events, significant threat disruption of school.
Okay.
Fair and unfair suspension of the expulsion, no official.
Okay.
So then we added definitions.
Oh.
This very last definition.
Okay.
Significant threat disruption to the school.
Okay. So we added the significant threat disruption to the school day definition, a suggestion that something unpleasant or violent will happen, especially if a particular action or order is not followed.
Justice.
Okay.
And then we added the significant threat disruption to school to the chart regarding first offense, second offense, so forth.
And then other than that's the date, correct? And I get a motion to approve the policy.
Motion.
Brooke?
Ashley.
Sorry. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Nine point four.
We tabled that one?
What's that?
We tabled that one? Shouldn't label it.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. We will table, table that for the time being.
Yeah.
Till next month. Okay. And I have two resignations. One just came in this morning and one was from last month that we forgot to add. First one is from Andrew Boersma, dated March 21st. Below is the letter that I turned in last night and also my resignation. Thank you all for your friendship and support over the last seven years. I've enjoyed teaching, yet decided at this time to pursue something closer to my family. I wanted to let you know that I will be resigning at the end of this school year to pursue a job opportunity with, is it Quintero? This has been a challenging decision for me as I have grown to love and appreciate the student, staff and community of Wolsey. I am thankful for your support of me and the Wolsey Wesleyan FFA chapter for the seven years that I've taught here. I would say the cultural education and FFA are an integral part of the Wolsey Wesleyan School District and Community. My hope is that you will find a qualified candidate to fill this position and continue to build the program. I will do what I can to assist in the transition process. Thank you again for your support of me and I'm grateful for the time that I've been teaching in this community, Andrew Boersma. Second one we just received today from Samantha Black. After much consideration, I regret to inform you that I will not be returning for the 2024 school year. This decision is based on my family's needs. I will miss working with everyone I met. I hope to visit on special days volunteering in my kiddos' classrooms. Sincerely, Samantha Black. And I get a motion to accept those two resignations. So Jeff, second?
I'll second.
Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Resignations approved. Approved contracts. We have.
We have one more.
What's that?
And then you have the one more.
Yeah, so I have, well, you want to talk about Jeff and Sharon while I find you?
So Dave talked to Jeff and Sharon and they are willing to come back and mo and do some of that outside stuff. And so looking forward, a motion to approve, having them come back and then how much more?
And last year, what were they up for?
It was nineteen twenty-five, I went up to nineteen seventy-five.
So they are at, they were at nineteen seventy-five?
Nineteen, nineteen, wasn't it nineteen twenty-five?
Probably went up to nineteen fifty-six.
Or fifty cents.
I thought you said fifty cent.
So we have four.
I think they were, they were at, we go up to nineteen seventy-five, which is fifty cents increased from what you did last year. So I kind of just followed your safe thought.
So recommending that nineteen seventy-five? Okay, okay. And I have two other contracts to approve. The first one is for Leah Youngman to be first grade teacher to replace Tammy Myers' retirement. Second one is for Jayden Bowman to be our new band director. Jayden's contract's dated April 3rd and Leah's is dated today. So we have three contracts to approve. Can I get a motion? And.
Do you want to do a motion?
No, I'll, in July have, except for Jeff and Sharon.
Okay. Any questions on those, first and foremost? Tara will abstain from the elementary votes, so they're not going to do them all at once.
Want to do one more? So, any questions?
If I could get a motion for that.
I'll take a motion to approve those contracts.
Jamie, all right, I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those contracts have been approved. Do you want, do you want me just to discuss it or do you want me to talk about the, the track?
I'll check.
Okay. This past, Greg Benson was always a paid track coach, but due to some medical issues, he did not come back this year. We were in the planning stages of filling that position and something got lost along the way, so we were, only had three paid coaches for seventy kids, which is rough, but then a lot of times we're losing one of those coaches to get drive bus sometimes too. So we'd be left with two paid coaches for seventy kids if our moms are social. Lindy had recommended we bring in our cross-country coach to help fill out this season, which makes sense because she's a cross-country coach and Shayle had agreed to that, but instead of a contract, we were just thinking a stipend to finish out the year unincorporated. And more as the junior high coach because she has some duties and, and as a parent that are imperative that she be here as much as she can, so. But she will be attending like the 281 and state and those type of things, so. Trying to please as many people as we can, but, and Lindy said her practices would be totally important and we just kind of shifted the coaches around to cover bases. And I don't even remember what stipend if he came up with an amount on that or just, just.
I'll just program it maybe.
Okay. So if I could get an approval to approve Shayle Mullenberg for the junior high track stipend for this year?
Motion.
Jamie?
I'll second.
Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We have went through nine point eight, first certified negotiations. Thank you, everybody. I mean, the staff was great, Amy and, or Ashley and Tara. I just wrote their coattails, they took care of everything. So we did come to agreement and I hope everyone's happy, so. Signed by everyone, so could I get a motion to approve certified negotiations?
It's all.
Second?
Second.
Tara, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Non-certified negotiations, once again, everybody was great. Thank you all for making it the process it was. Can I give a motion to approve those which we just did this morning?
Motion.
Ashley?
Second.
Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Nine point eight, that's nine point eight, or nine point ten. Oh, yep, and did we take off Sam Easton?
I did just now.
Okay. In your packet there is the list of the contracts that we've, currently. Here now, can I get a, I get a motion to offer the contracts as presented in our packets. Tara, I get a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Is that taken care of?
Yes, I will email everyone either Tiger or Morgan.
Okay, thank you very much. Nine point eleven, Julia, if you could give us some information.
So I just printed my little packet, it's got what our current protocol is and what I think they'll recommend. So right now, if someone tests positive for COVID, then they are required to stay out for five days regardless of an accident or not. On March first, on March first, the CDC eliminated the isolation recommendation for COVID and they grouped it into the guidance for all viruses. So if someone had influenza, the same thing would apply if someone would have COVID. And so that is here, what they're, how they're grouping COVID into the respiratory virus snapshot. Our current protocol says on our guidelines that they must be out for five days from the start of symptoms, so I would recommend that we just eliminate that completely.
That number six?
Yep, number six. And then this, this page is in our handbooks, so that's what, the next page is from our middle school, high school handbook, and the next page is from our elementary handbook, so just striking those out of there.
Do you, I just have a question. What's that? Do you want them striked out or you just want to change the requirement? Just take them?
Because they're just treated.
They're just treated as any illness. So it would replace, and then on the other one was like our, I don't know how long this is actually going to have to be in effect. It's the COVID protocol that was requirement by the state, so I don't know if that's going to have to be continued, but just take that out completely and replace it with follow existing school guidelines for illness. So they would still have to, if they have COVID, they have a fever, you can't return to school with a fever. And that's for any illness. So just following any usual illness guidelines is what I would recommend, just take out anything that.
Reverse COVID.
And these are the only places I could actually find anything related to that. This safe return protocol, that's probably the only one that's really, they would see it, I guess.
Yeah, so what's the state currently stated or did they change?
Well, the CDC, the CDC, yeah, they put, if you go to their website and click on it, it takes you to this CDC, to this respiratory guidance.
Okay.
That's what the state wants to do.
Okay.
And we update this and then it just calls for update finisher?
Yeah.
Without having the, the ancient policy.
Because I think we just updated it a couple months ago.
Yeah, this is whatever.
We'll just go ahead.
If we do it this month, we should have to do it in June or we still have to do it in June?
But it would be just the same thing then.
Probably has to be on.
It would just have to be on my minutes.
And then the handbooks would get changed and they'll go out and present at school year. But that would just, you know, help with having kids in school, teachers being able to, you know, be at school as long as they're feeling well.
Okay. Any questions on that case? Can I get a motion to update the COVID guidelines as recommended by our school nurse?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Handicap bus. Handicap bus. We, what's that?
You, Greg, you talked about it or?
You go ahead and then I'll just fill in and pick them all up and get it away.
So it's looking like we're gonna need to get a handicap bus, and so we have thrown between Dave, Russ and Lindsay and I, we have been throwing them around some ideas of should it be a big bus, mini bus, and we're recommending a minibus, then we don't have to have like a CDL driver. We have a student who will be needing this in the future. So I've done, I've talked to Formans, then after we decided and they have, they do have a couple of used ones. But they're high enough where I need a bit. So it's like, so I said, I'm gonna come to you guys, talk to you and see if I, if you want me to start a video process on it. They do have a couple that, buses that are older ones, over a hundred thousand miles. But we're also looking at a student for six years. Got any thoughts?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, if we have to maintain these for that long, if we wouldn't buy something that high miles on, it's gonna get that much use. We're averaging right about fifteen to twenty thousand miles a year in a minimum, any buses currently, so. At six years, that puts us over two hundred thousand miles and I, I would be pretty nervous about that, being able to maintain that for that long. Unless the price was where we could feasibly get rid of it. I got another one, but then we're at the window of what's available, if that would be another one in three or four years.
Are there any grants available for?
There's money out there, I don't know if we missed the, for this year.
So, and I don't know if that was for many.
And I don't know if it was for many buses, I know there's, there's lots of grand money out there to go to electric, but that's not something I really think we do.
Did it get bigger bus for grant?
There's a certain factor.
I believe so, I think it was for the full, full-size buses that took my bill.
Around what are we hoping at?
So the used twenty, twenty-three one that has around twenty-five thousand miles is eighty-two thousand. A, a new handicap minibus is around a hundred and eight thousand.
Is there anything they can do to retrofit and make the current bus that we have now ADA compliant? Is that?
How about ice?
I don't know how all that works or if it's even possible.
I haven't asked that question. I mean, just looking at the design of them, I mean, you'd be like replacing a whole, you'd probably have to replace a whole sidewall on a bus just to get the ramp and the lift device in there. I don't, I can ask, but I just don't.
And it might be.
Right now.
It might be cost prohibitive to do it that way versus.
I mean, I think every night too, we're already running our current minibuses.
Yeah, both minibuses run at night. They don't both, both all the morning, but they do both run.
And we seem to be having a hard time getting CDL bus drivers and then picking them. So that's why I think part of it too is leaning towards this, so. He lives on two different directions, his parents live in two different directions, so it would be hard to just create a bus route for this.
If we pick a student up in a vehicle, does it have to be a bus? Like if we have an ADA van, like say like people transit. I know that might be a little bit cheaper for us and has availability.
Yeah, we could discuss that option as well. I think the hard part about it is you pretty much have to have a dedicated person to that task versus where now we could put somebody that's already on a route, you don't want to be making part of a route. But yeah, I mean, we can talk about that. I've looked at ADA compliant vans, they're sixty thousand-ish.
Right.
So, uh, depends on the model or style, like if you're going the minivan style, yeah, I think you can get a minivan on that route.
And this would be for the twenty-four, twenty-five?
We're trying to get things updated this summer, so we are ready.
Any of our buses, when we can get rid of a big bus and use this minibus in place of it?
Well, but, I mean, when they put the handicap in there, then you can't see as many in there.
And then when the route changes.
When he takes, when he goes, he rides two different routes, so that's what makes it hard too. So, you know, I make a route one way for him, then the next week he's going the other direction and.
Could I ask the transportation committee to get together with Dave and, and Russ and Amy just to kind of figure out what they feel is the best, best path forward? But next meeting.
Yep.
We'll, we'll table that.
Okay.
Until the main meeting then. Just to look at our various options, maybe there's something out there that can work. Okay, well. Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to go on executive session at six oh six, or ask for a motion to go on executive session at six oh six.
Motion. Ashley.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.